All right, we're gonna call the New Richmond Elementary School Edition Board of Education back into regular session. So the first item on our agenda is approval of the agenda, so it is recommended the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Sub move.
Second. Okay. Roll call.
Mr. DeFaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Yes. Recognition.
I would like to invite Dr. Coons from Monroe Elementary. Tonight is our first set. I didn't say set because our goal this year is to acknowledge one student and one staff member for our Beth Webster Leading Lion Awards. Dr. Coons, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm excited because this time when I'm talking about my two folks, they actually go together, so it's gonna be really fun. So I'm gonna tell the story and then invite them up here. I know one cannot be with us this evening, she may be actually driving the bus, but we'll get to that. So Monroe has a very strong positive behavior intervention program in place at the school. And in recent years, we've partnered with the Transportation Department to help our students show their pride, not only at school, but while also on the school bus. So many of our drivers have embraced the program and they've been giving out our coffee and good tickets to the kids on their routes to and from school. But I'll be honest, more often than not, when I hear from bus drivers, it's when there's a problem. So I'll get referrals to the office for misconduct or misbehavior on the bus, but I will tell you that for the very first time in my 11 years in this district, it seems like this yesterday, but after 11 years, I received my very first positive office referral from the school, school bus. So that was very exciting. So that just showed me not only has Carrie Rigenbach, one of our drivers, embraced our positive behavior plan, but she's also making it work for her and for the students who ride on her route. So I wanted to thank her for her efforts and her commitments to our kids and to positive behavior initiatives at Monroe. So all that said, it was no surprise to me that that first referral came from the bus driver, Thor Miss Mia Pedraza. So I will tell you that Mia is quite possibly one of the kindest and most helpful students I have had the honor of working with in my 17 years as a principal. She always comes to school with a smile, she is always working hard to give it her best shot, no matter what it takes. And this year, she has made it her personal mission to be a positive role model on the school bus by sitting with some of our younger students, helping them with that transition, especially coming back to school when there were lots of peers for our little friends. Mia sat with our younger riders and helped them to have a positive time while riding the bus to school. So it is my honor and privilege tonight to recognize both Miss Carrie Rigenbach, one of our favorite school bus drivers at Monroe, and Miss Mia Pedraza, one of my all-time favorite students I've ever had the pleasure of working with. So Mia, you wanna come on up and take a picture with us? Please?
Parents, if you wanna come up with her, you can. We're up here. Everybody, somebody's handling this. Everybody come up.
Come on, Robbie, you wanna be in the picture?
Yeah.
Either everybody needs to step that way or we need to wrap them. All right, ready? Three, two, one. Hang on one second, let me make sure that's clear. Different.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. We are proud of you.
Superintendent's report.
I would like to invite up our athletic director, Mr. Donald Newberry, also known as Trey. He's gonna share a little bit about some of the payment systems and some of the ways that we're trying to modernize our athletics and concessions program.
All right, wait for the slides pop up.
I do, yeah.
Yeah.
There we go. There we go. Awesome. All right, well, thank you for having me. Can you click this first page? So I put agenda items like this, it's gonna be a 30-minute presentation. I keep it, I keep it within five minutes. If I hit my points today, we will discuss moving into the 21st century with regards to the digital benefits. Less cash equals less problems, inventory tracking, sales trends, and also just keeping up with competitors. All right, so first thing I wanna discuss is Square System, which is a digital point of system, system, point of sale system. Can you click the first, the top? That's my, that's my. Top.
Square Register is one point of sale with two screens.
Is this one on your screen? It is. One second. I need to search for the slide. Multiple displays, yeah. You can play the music in the background. Find the Japanese musical. At this rate, it might be a half-hour presentation, so scratch when I say it. Here we go. That's your phone. All right, this is a.
That adds up to exactly what your business needs. All you have to do is log in. Quickly take orders on one large responsive touchscreen while your customers confirm totals and securely pay their way in another, which equals a checkout that's twice as fast. Seamlessly sync every side of your business, from online to in-person, with free point-of-sale software that's already installed. And specialty options for restaurants, retail, and appointments. Plus, with the right accessories, there's no limit to what you can do. Easy right out of the box for everyone on your team to rely on, with 24/7 support every step of the way, and zero hidden fees or long-term commitments. From setup to selling, the fully integrated Square Register is one simply powerful solution.
Thank you, Gar. Thank you. Over a demonstration of Square for restaurants and a full-service atmosphere. This is my home screen. I can customize the background how I want, I can put whatever logo or picture that I want to. Do you wanna give on employees a forward-looking square? That's gonna allow you to track sales per employee, tips per employee, and you also want to. All right, and then the next slide, please. Thank you. All right, so the Square is something that I am requesting, see if we can get to our concession stands. I put a couple of notes up to discuss. We've seen sales increases to as much as 28% in high school concession stands. To give you an idea of the cost, there's a 2.6% fee as well as a 15-cent fee that is added to the customer, so it would not be on our side. The idea of terminal costs, they can go, the new system's a $7.99, but you can also get them as low as $300 plus iPads that we have sitting in the office right now that we're not really utilizing. It allows us to do inventory tracking, so for instance, when we do our Coke orders or orders of whatever it is that we have, we put the SKUs in, it gives us an idea of what it is that we are actually selling, you can see trends. And then this generation of kids, to be honest with you, they don't carry cash, everything is on their phone or on their watch, and we're leaving a lot of meat on the phone. So I wanted to discuss the point of sale. Click to the next one. There's a second piece, which is hometown ticketing. All right, so I have been asking to see if we can utilize Stripe, which is the system that would allow us to receive ACH payments. Right now, we do have hometown, but they are essentially giving us a check at the end of our events. Hometown ticketing is a system that Ohio, the OHSA utilizes for basically everything, all of our tournaments, most schools in the state utilize hometown ticketing. So right now, we are utilizing it, but we wanted to go digital and allow us to receive ACH, which would allow us to receive our payments a lot quicker. So with the digital platform, I'm still on my thunder. So again, it's what the OHSA uses. One of the benefits is it allows any of our stakeholders to essentially beat ticketing lines, they can pre-purchase tickets. And then again, the proceeds can be sent via Stripe. We currently use it right now, but we just want to use the ACH piece, so again, just to go digital. And appreciate the time, I still got under five minutes. But if there's any questions, comments, or concerns, just wanted to be here to see if I can answer any questions anyone might have.
We still have the option for cash, though, correct?
Oh, yeah. So the state says that we have to have the cash option, but yes.
Yeah, the amount of people coming to the concession stands and your cash only is only increasing.
I was on, yeah, I was on the other side, and there was a gentleman, it was Friday, and he came in, he got all this stuff ordered all up, and he said, pulled out his card and had the sanction right back up. So there's just, there's a lot that we're looking at table, but just move to 21st century.
Are we allowed to ask a question? Are we allowed to ask a question?
Yeah, you can ask a question.
I just wondered, what about like more spirit wear, things like that?
So you can sell, yeah, absolutely everything. So you could actually move the spirit shop into a concession stand, but this is also that our concession tent that we use to sell merch can also use Square as well.
One of the questions that always inevitably comes up is the speed of ease. So on the actual iPad, are you just, are those volunteers, I think about training, they may need a few minutes, but are they moving more quickly because they're not really totaling anything? They're hitting the icons and boom, 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 there's the total.
Yes, so, all right, so that was what you heard, that music that you didn't see the screen, that was actually displaying what it looks like.
Okay.
So in that sense, we would put anything, any of our SKUs on there, it basically just shows a picture, they tap, tap, tap. Probably takes a little bit more time than if someone would just exchange your cash, but then it allows us again, from an inventory standpoint, to keep up with things. So, okay. All right, you're welcome. Appreciate it, thank you.
21st century.
All right. Well, a few items, just notes from around the district, so just a superintendent's update for September of 2025. Couple of events just wanna highlight for you on this campus. Both, I had the opportunity to attend both of our curriculum nights at the high school and the middle school. Again, I wanna thank our staff for being there. Parents had the opportunity to walk their student schedules, have a chance to meet with the administrators, and again, see and hear about the work that their students are doing on a day-to-day basis. Today, we held our annual safety day. I will talk a little bit about the partners that supported us. This is my first one. There was just some apprehension on my part, I had never been part of one and not really seen the work that had been done, but I do wanna shout out internally our team here, Steve Wolf and Jake, him and Gar, who helped some of our classified staff. Dr. Hollensworth sat in and worked with our elementary in a couple of sessions, and you know, it was great. Gar back there running the camera, did a lot of work around the district today on rooms and helping us improve our communication and getting our staff up and running. It is a big change, and you know, changes is, people take change at a different pace and rate, so we have some people that are sprinting and some people that are still crawling, and that's totally acceptable and fine. So he has been embedded in the schools, really supporting them, so, and both Luke Cox, Transportation and Maintenance, and Brenda Young had events for their staff. So after seeing it today and living it, I really see why it's valued and important to our community. And then just wanna shout out our workforce readiness initiatives, how we're connecting our kids to the broader Cincinnati market. So we have three students that are in the IT Jump Start Program, that is the MATHS you can have with Inter Alliance. So those are IT professionals, and they will meet, they need a couple hours each month, and they will have opportunities in that field. They will also have some events around the tri-state area. UC Claremont is having, on Friday, September 19th, we will have a bus going for a free network opportunity for local students interested in sports administration, so we will have a bus going there. We are thankful to be partnered with the Claremont County Educational Service Center, who picked up our whole bill this year, for 10 of our students to participate in a four-day learning series to help them develop future career plans and interact with local professionals. They will be going to Batavia and Milford High School twice each, and they will then become mentors and grow others here in the local high school area. Tuesday, October 28th, there's gonna be a health course event at the Great Wolf Lodge, so another great connection for our kids. And finally, you know, October is manufacturing month, talk about a hot field, you know, where kids can go right into jobs and in a thriving market, and we will be working with the supply chain OKI to have students be partnering with that work. And as well as last month, Caroline Coulter, who's our career connector, went out to Hamilton County ESC to have our kickoff for, to be part of the Greater Cincinnati Consortium. So one of the commitments that we made is to connect our children to the broader community, and I wanna shout out Caroline for that work. We have put a lot on her to make that role and transform it into something different. Our focus is really lying for key areas, it's not in order of hierarchy, they're just four equal buckets. There is career-oriented, where you're going right into a successful career. There are military options for kids, there are college, both two- and four-year institutions, as well as helping our young people be entrepreneurs. I mean, there are young people who are starting their businesses. Those are the four buckets that we see and want to help our children who go to school here and grow through our school system, be prepared for. So I do wanna shout out our partners today. Kelsey Smothers was here from the Claremont County Drug Free Coalition, she did some four sessions, she actually was our only presenter that traveled around the district, she went to each site, I'm thankful for her, she did some trauma care. She also met with some teachers during lunchtime, and they helped her kind of redesign her presentation on the fly to make it a little more applicable to elementary, so really appreciate her. Officer Goldsmith, who's our SRO through Claremont County Sheriff's Department, and he brought some professionals in to work on three very realistic Alice scenarios. We had the New Richmond Fire and EMS come do some AED training for the junior high and for middle school and high school. And then Hamilton County ESC, a request from our elementary staff, both at Locust Corner and Monroe, they did a de-escalation training, and they did digital citizenship. One of the things our teachers asked for very clearly was, they wanna know what kind of behaviors our kids are engaging in at varying ages online, and some of the ways that we can partner with parents and do some digital citizenship work. So we had those sessions, and then principals had some individual sessions, and it was a commitment to make sure our public school works and other items were done in each building to have 60 minutes, just of downtime and reflection time. It's a heavy day. We started with the Alice drill and some reminders around professional social media, and also just the 10 tips from Homeland Security, the U.S. Department of Education, and the National School Resource Officers Association around how to, you know, keep kids, community, staff safe, and it's not always just a locked door, it's a system that, you know, Dr. Coons talked about it tonight, PBIS. It's also about positive and productive relationships with law enforcement, which we have a well-established safety committee here in our district with all of our municipalities, and talks about trauma and form care, just the whole gamut. It's not just about, you know, the physicality of keeping a building secure, it's really the whole system. So thankful for our partners who were able to come out and make our day meaningful, and hopefully, all of our staff were able to take away some tools for them and for their students. Communications, highlighting just one of our commitments is, we did launch our August Staff Newsletter, our first one, we had a Safety Day Newsletter, and as I mentioned, Garth has been training staff on rooms and wheelchair externally. Really proud of the work that Garth is doing to highlight all of our 290-some employees. Each of them has a story, and I think that our community, it's interesting to see, and it's fun to see the relationships and the connections, that no matter what job you have in our district, you are an educator and you are a positive role model, and there are definite connections that they all make. So those shout-outs are really fun, and I think it's also a good way for each of our employees internally to learn the job and the things that interest each other. We did launch our Earned Income Tax Facts and website, and then we're working on our first quarterly district newsletter to go out through rooms and, you know, our messaging system. Great school districts are nothing without great employees. Our commitments, when I was, you know, sat here and heard the stories of our employees, how can we align, find, grow, and keep our staff? I've started our voluntary staff meetings, I did the high school and the middle school combined, we had about 30 staff members. I will go to Monroe this week and finish up with Locust Corner later this month. Exit interview results were shared with the entire staff. We have opened our Employee of the Month nominations for September, as of last Monday, I think Garth shared, we had 22 nominations to look through, so we will announce those at the beginning of October. Today, we launched our culture survey to all of our staff, and I'm really thankful for the presence of our team in the building. So between Dr. Hollensworth, Mr. Frye, Mr. Shanklin, myself, Mr. Wolf, and Jake, we are present and making sure, not just for window dressing, but to make sure our staff have what they need, and we're hearing the things that they believe will help us grow and get better. And finally, for the broader community, as we are getting closer to the opening of our health center, here are some pictures, this is the facilities construction update for the Appalachian Community Grant. So this, you'll see two pictures here on, I don't know how to say this, so on the left, under the facilities word, depending on how you're looking at it on camera, that is the main intake lobby where our receptions will be, behind the counter, you cannot see it as the system, which will help our students buzz in from the middle school directly into the clinic. There is a two-door system there that will keep everyone safe and will keep external visitors from being able to get into the school building. This is the long hallway with the exam room, so there is a janitor's closet, a restroom, there are three exam rooms, a lab, which you'll see later, and then the clinician's office. And our clinician is actually a district parent, so we are excited about that, from Children's Hospital. This, the larger picture with cabinetry is the lab area, and then this is an example of an exam room, as you know, a long way to go, but the next part of the finishing the room comes from all the supplies from Children's, not part of the grant, all the medical equipment. And then the most important thing is we are itching to get our staff, their staff lounge back, so we are so close. This ended up being a larger space than most had thought originally. So vending machines and copy machine, we'll go back in there, and they should have full use of their lounge after the punch list is done this week, so we are thankful for their flexibility. We know they like to eat together, we know that that community time is important to them, and they will have that back shortly, and Mr. Evanshine will be happy to get all of the vending machines out of the virtual lab. For the broader community, upcoming events, there's a lot happening in the next month. We will have a couple forums around, about the earned income tax for community members to come learn. We will be at the River Valley Community Center on September 29th, and we will do lots of communication about these events on our social media and through our, you know, parent newsletters. We will have our transition, as you know, after 25 years, Mr. Pritchard will be leaving us, and Mr. Floyd will be transitioning our new treasurer, so that official transition will happen October 1st. We'll be in Ohio Township Hall on October 2nd for another EIT forum. These are just the upcoming ones, there will be more later in the month. The New Richmond Alumni Association is having a bus pull there. Fundraising efforts directly benefit our students through scholarships, and we are grateful. If you wanna see something fun, there will be about 10 administrators attempting to pull a bus, keyword attempting. We are there for show, I don't think we're gonna win prizes, but I couldn't be surprised. We'll have our ribbon cutting for the Appalachian Community Grant that will be at 10:00 a.m., it is on a Monday, it is during school. That is because all of the state officials that have made this possible through the grant are, they usually don't have any type of legislative sessions on Monday, so they will be available. We will do that in the auditorium, and then we will go over and do an official ribbon cutting outside for tours. October 9th is a homecoming parade, the intent is the football game, and then the board will meet again here for a work session on October 13th. That is my report and update for September.
Today, if you don't know, Brad, you wanna wave?
Yeah, sure. I'm Brad Ford, I'll be the new treasurer of the 10 one, so, too excited to be here. Talk earned income tax love is in October, so be ready for some riveting information.
Thank you. All right. Next, the public participation was submitted, so we give to second reading and rescission of policy.
This is our, we do not offer alternate meal policy here as we are going into our full, Brenda has what, Mrs. Young has what's called a full nutrition, you know, audit this year. We do not do this practice, so she had asked that we remove it, and as Treasurer Pritchard shared in the last public meeting, I think she has been able to cover through her profits any type of shortages, any type of meal shortages that have come about, negative balances is what we call them, so.
Okay. So upon second reading, it is recommended that the Board of Education rescind set policy, C501, alternative meal policy. Mrs. Story wants to make sure she's.
Second, Mr. DeFaul.
Any discussion?
Okay, roll call. Art, Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. DeFaul?
Yes.
Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
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 All right, memorandum of understanding.
Yes, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following memorandum of understanding with the New Richmond Teachers Organization, NRTO. This is, there is a staffing shortage in special education, we did have a teacher unfortunately need to leave us for personal reasons. We did work in collaboration with the organization. We do need to find and serve our students, we do need to find and support those teachers who are not getting their co-teaching or having those supports from the, you know, lack of a teacher. So in good faith, we have worked together to allow this memorandum of understanding to have the district be able to fulfill this through a contracted service, knowing fully that our intent is always to staff with a certified teacher that is our own, that would be a part if they choose of the organization, and this, we are presenting this, so it solidifies that all three parties in our agreement, that this is how we plan to move forward together, and what are next steps. It holds all of us accountable to make sure that we're doing the right thing together.
Okay, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the following memorandum of understanding of NRTO, a rank special education contracted service for the remainder of the 25, 26 of the year. Okay, Mr. DeFaul?
All set.
Mr. Pritchard, any discussion?
One quick question. Mr. Daniels, how's that evaluation process look like for that, for J13? Do they, does the company do that?
The principal gives feedback directly to the company, so they will not be inside of, if you're asking, will they be inside of an Ohio evaluation system? No. It also gives us the latitude to say if we are not happy with the service we are receiving, we can ask the company to find a replacement. I do know Dr. Coons had the ability to interview two.
who are not getting their co-teaching or having those supports from the, you know, lack of a teacher. So in good faith, we have worked together to allow this memorandum of understanding to have the district be able to fulfill this through a contracted service, knowing fully that our intent is always to staff with a certified teacher that is our own, that would be a part if they choose of the organization. And this, we are presenting this, so it solidifies that all three parties in our agreement that this is how we plan to move forward together and what are next steps. It holds all of us accountable to make sure that we're doing the right thing together.
Okay. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following memorandum of understanding of N R T O, our end special education contracted service for the remainder of the twenty-five, twenty-six of the year.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. DeValle?
Also moved.
Second, Mr. DeValle. Any discussion?
One quick question. Mr. Daniels, how's the evaluation process look for, look like for that, for J thirteen? Do they, does the company do that? Does?
The principal gives feedback directly to the company. So they will not be inside of, if you're asking, will they be inside of an Ohio evaluation system? No. It also gives us the latitude to say if we are not happy with the service we are receiving, we can ask the company to find a replacement. I do know Dr. Poots had the ability to interview two candidates. She has selected one. Both were more than qualified, and we are awaiting their final onboarding with the company to start.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, roll call. Art, Mr. DeValle?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
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 Human resource item.
So the administration has the following items.
You're on, Garth.
What'd you do, Garth?
I went and dug it in a, oops!
Yeah, it's oops. Well, oops is nature looking for is gone. It's probably the first time in the last couple of days that this is they could have signed a paper copy in front of me.
Yeah, me too.
I don't want this code. Yeah. So the public at home may not be able to see it, but how would you like to continue?
I mean, you can read from what you have there.
All right, so what we
It was published beforehand.
It was published beforehand. It will, the minutes will be out there, so I will do my best, Jeffrey, so we have items A through, looks like H, so we will start with A, which is acceptance of resignations. So we have two resignations this evening. We have Douglas Eagle, certified employee for personal reasons effective September third, twenty-twenty-five. And then we would like to congratulate Jeffrey Dern, who was hired all the way back in nineteen ninety-four. He is retiring from Locust Corner after many years of service to the district. Jeff is a true champion of the work of both Locust Corner and New Richmond Exempted Village Schools, and we will certainly miss him. His date of retirement will be May thirty-one of twenty-twenty-six. That is item A, resignations. We have one employee for you to hire this evening. It is under certified employees. That's Samuel Nutt List. Samuel is an intervention specialist, one-year full-time limited contract. It is prorated because he's, his official hire date will be September fifth, oh, great, twenty-twenty-five, and that is due to licensure from the state Ohio. So Sam moved from, well, he will move from a long-term sub to officially certified, and that will be backdated until the fifth, the day his license was issued. Under classified employees, we have Stephen Peacock, which is a bus driver, full-time, one-year limited contract effective today. His should be hired, as well as Haley Rowan, full-time, one-year limited contract, a professional, salary step one, effective today as well. We are recommending this evening a few subs. Tiffany Ortiz, classified bus A, that will be in transportation, and both Shannon Meyer and Jamie Little, classified food service. There is a stipend here for you to approve for a net honorment, district head custodian, one dollar an hour, and that is effective back to July one, twenty-twenty-five. We are recommended in item F, Gabriel Kellum, fall assistant athletic director, which is a two-thousand-dollar stipend. We have rest of mentors. Those are, those are staff members who support year one and year two, new staff members, as well as those transitioning to a, I guess, a five-year license. So that's why you see a difference between the stipends there. So we have three who are helping a transition of licensure, and the rest are supporting teachers in year one or year two. Even though it says level RE one mentor, that's because of House Bill ninety-six, they all will do the same work at the same stipend. And then for you this evening, we have supplemental contracts. Most of these will be fall coaches that we have not on-boarded, or co-curriculars, as well as one volunteer. And the attachment with Word docs works. For those at home, they are in different colors. The new staff that we are asking the board to approve this evening will be in red with today's date. And you'll see a lot of these are co-curriculars, with very few that are actually sports related.
Okay. It is recommended the Board of Education approve items nine A through nine H.
So moved.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Okay, roll call. Art, Mr. DeValle?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes. Treasurers are aboard. Okay, you missed your number. Item A is approval of the August eleventh special meeting minutes. Item B is approval of the August sixteenth special meeting minutes. And item C is approval of the August eighteenth regular meeting minutes. Item D is our approval of our financial reports. Couple things to note here. It's early in the year, not a whole lot to share, but we did get our first half real estate settlement check, five point four million dollars. We get two of those a year. It's the first half, so we're always glad to see that come in. And we got our casino payment and lottery payment for sixty-five thousand. So those are really the big ticket items for our money coming in. And since that was a big payment, we actually have more revenue. We do expenditures this time. That's going to be my last report. More revenue expenditures. Item E is acceptance of donations, and we are always appreciating donations. We have a hundred-dollar donation for the Beth Webster Memorial Scholarship Fund, and a forty-nine-hundred-dollar donation for youth wrestling, to the athletic club for wrestling. Item F is a request for a new scholarship, Kristen Bennett Legacy Scholarship. The attachment shows what the requirements are to meet the scholarship. The boards have to approve the scholarship as an official scholarship for student use, so that is item F. And then item G is approval of our fiscal year twenty-six appropriations resolution. So this is all of our grants. We expect to kind of spend this year to, with all of our funding. That is item G. And that is all I have for the district report. All right. It is recommended the Board of Education approve items ten A through item ten G.
Also moved.
Second. Any discussion? Well, I think it would be appropriate now to thank Mr. Pritchard for his service. Anybody that wants to give some additional comments, but thank you for your service to the school district overall in the last several years, and the challenges we've had with our finances. We really appreciate all you've done and the ideas you've brought to the table. So we just wanted to say we appreciate that.
We got a little token for you. We all want to tell you thanks very much for all, from technology to our treasurer.
Thank you very much.
We're all the way present. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
We'll miss your knowledge of New Richmond. Hopefully, you won't mind. You won't charge us a fee if we need to call. So you know the history very well, this district. We will miss you, but good luck.
Always here for you guys.
So thanks for everything you've done.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Thanks for the good report at the end of the year. There was a positive report. All right, with that, roll call.
All right, Mr. DeValle?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zerwin?
Yes.
All right, communications report.
Thankfully, I don't need more blocks for this tonight. So I want to talk a little bit about the website that we launched in regards to the earned income tax levy. I'm going to do it from back here so I can actually control the computer. On the administration tab of our webpage, there's a new link right at the top for the income tax levy. We showed this a little bit back at the work session last week, and there's a little bit of change to it. There are, at the top here, some high-level questions that need to be answered, like, why do we need the levy? What is our income tax levy? Why hasn't the district asked for this amount? When will I see it? Things like that. There's also a calculator over here on the right-hand side where you can put in your pre-tax income amount, and I tried this last time, and it didn't work very well for me, so I'm going to do a little bit better this time. And you can type in, well, you can put more tax, how much you contribute to your retirement, your healthcare premiums, dental premiums, vision, and any other pre-tax deductions you have for retirement, or anything like that. Then you can choose what type. So when you type in the pre-tax amount, I chose one that will probably be, I would assume, an annual amount. So you can choose here if it's not, if it's something you can buy weekly or weekly. You can calculate, and it'll show you about how much it would cost you per year. You can also go back and play the calculator again if you want to. This is just something on the website that we put out there for our families to kind of figure out how this would impact them without having to go to forty-five thousand different places and trying to find different calculators and things like that. There is also a frequently asked questions section down here at the bottom. These are questions that we pulled directly off of the FAQ sheet here. You can see off to the side. There will be more of these updating, and we'll explain a little bit why here. There'll be more coming in a second. But for now, these are all the ones that we have on there. There are also some links here. You can see the full report of the severance package that was offered at the conclusion of last year. You can see the amount of property taxes that are, may have changed, what we're doing to balance the budget, and questions like that. On the important links section, you can find financial reports through the state website from twenty thirteen to present. All you would do is click that link, and when this loads, if it loads, in the search box here, just type in the district, pull it up, and then over here, you choose which year you want to look at, and which forecast you want to see. You generate it, and there it is. So all of those are back, I think that's twelve or thirteen different forecasts that are on there.
And I would also note that there's tabs at the bottom that will provide additional commentary and description of what those numbers mean. So a lot of times, there have been questions that I've been getting that it's in the detail of the report, so make sure you go to those different tabs as well.
And it breaks it off by revenue, it breaks it off by expenditures, and shows you the balances that are there after each fiscal year. So this right here is a quick one-page levy flyer that we made in income tax fact sheet. It has a little bar graph that shows the difference between the revenue and the income, and compared to the expenses, as the expenses in the red continue to rise. You can also see on this graph, when the first levy was passed back in twenty twenty, and then the impact that started to have, and then the Zimmer closure, and the impact that started to have. So we also have a little bit more information about how we got there in text format, in case you're going to read it. A couple more frequently asked questions and some contact information on the bottom of the page. There is also, on the right-hand side, the full fact sheet that was approved for me last month, or last week. So all of the information on that page came from this sheet as well. If you want to read it just as a, I don't know why you want to read it as a fun thing, but if you want to read it all at once without the internet and the website being in your way, then here it is. There's one link that I think I forgot to save, but that's okay, because I'll show it anyway. This here is a Google form that I have just sent out at six o'clock to the community. This is for them to ask us questions, and then we will turn around and answer those questions, and they already have one apparently, from the community on social media. So when I get to this, I am not going to be the one answering the questions. I will leave it to people who know how to do math, but I will make the graphics and make it look pretty. This is what it would look, that's the wrong thing. It's not what it would look like. There is a Q and A graphic where we type in the question, we type in the answer, we share that to all the social media pages. I have asked them when they submit these to submit their name and email. Those will not be shared. They are just in case we need to figure out what the question needs, if we need clarity or something like that. That went out about forty-five minutes ago, and I'm sure Facebook is just loving it. Finally, there's another thing that'll go out here. We have these community events that we talked about coming up earlier. This will go out to the district as well, so they know that these two EIT forums are coming up. I want to make sure that they're aware of that. Then the questions and answers will be posted with this as often as they need to be refreshed, and the questions will be answered and asked as soon as we get the information back. So that's what we've got going so far. If there are any questions.
We just need to adjust one of those to, yeah, October second is the
Second, okay. That hasn't run out yet, so.
Save. Those will all be at six thirty.
Yes.
Our goal is, for the community, our goal is not to stand and talk. It's to give a high-level overview, the same high-level overview in each of those sessions, and then kind of have a Q and A. We appreciate the time that those that will come out and invest with us. Our goal is about an hour. We know everybody's busy, but we want to meet people in their community, and so we feel that that's important to be in their community and not ask them to come to us.
Speaking of questions with regards to social media, I would also just like to point out, there have been a lot of questions posted in the comments of the Facebook posts that we've made about this so far. I would prefer they be submitted to the Google form just because it's easier to get lost in the weeds of Facebook comments. If you have a question and I see it, we can add it, but if you want it to be read for sure, submit it to the Google form. I'm just going to go down to the Thank you.
I just want to say thanks. I mean, as someone who chaired the prior levy committee, the district did not do this. This was on the backs of many people trying to put this information together. So thank you for putting it all in one place and giving us a resource to send community residents to. Thank you.
Good stuff. Good job.
It's not loving you.
Is that it for communications? Next is board discussion, like the considerations in earned income tax impact.
So when we were putting the agenda together, this was an opportunity just to talk about the community forums, maybe begin to hear your perspective as a board. You never want to go into any situation with a negative mindset, but to hear just some of your thoughts. As Mr. Pritchard and I were talking today, you know, one of the things, a factual thing that we need to make sure our community understands is if this doesn't pass, and this is not a scare tactic, it's just factual, you have to have a balanced budget. You can't be spending more than you're taking in. You're not allowed to have a negative balance. In order to remain afloat for one more year, it's two million dollars of cuts, but that's, as Mr. Pritchard reminded me, it's not two million dollars of cuts one time. It's two million dollars of cuts each year until we become stable. And so we wanted to begin to get a sense of what questions or ideas or direction the board would like the administration to go in is to be thinking about. It would be unwise for us to not have a backup plan. So we want to hear your suggestions, thoughts, areas of research that you would like us to move in to think about, what does a two-million-dollar cut look like? Because it has to be part of the conversation. So we're looking for some directions, some guidance, and some things that you would like for us to begin to consider, run numbers on, or to brief you on.
I think one thing that helped last time was having community engagement, where we set this particular off on this particular room many nights for several months, and to hear from the taxpayers and all the stakeholders in regards to, you know, listing what they value for the Richmond schools, what do they see, and basically coming from there from that list. But as they come up with that list, then we need to come up with a price of what that costs. And I think by having community input, rather than putting it on the five shoulders of the board that will be here in January, I think the community input is very, very valuable, and I think our community enjoys that and feels respected when we hear them speak. Because I believe the four, three of us that were on the board last time, I think we listened, though they may not have liked our closing of a building, but I think if we ask them now and they see where we are now compared to where we were, I think they would agree and say it was an okay decision to do that. But I think we need to bring the community in and set up some subgroups and kind of lay it out there. I'm not saying that we need to look at bringing in an outside agency or organization to do that for us. I think between the board and our stakeholders and Paul and Brett, I think between everybody on the team inside can figure out what that looks like, rather than paying thousands of dollars for somebody else to do that for us. So, but I think we need to have them at the table as much as everybody else. That's teachers, parents, retired people, you name it, businesses, everybody.
And I think having some new eyes at the table. I mean, again, it's not a reflection of anything other than I mean, again, it's not a reflection of anything other than fresh eyes, looking at opportunities to generate revenue. I don't know that that's going to fix the hole we're in, but you've mentioned things periodically, Paul, about opportunities for the district to generate revenue with our facilities or otherwise, to see where we could generate that. I think something that we've already heard in the community is, I think last time, we spent a lot of time talking about the levy and where we would spend those funds, like the priority of those funds and the message being very clear around, like this is base operations. We're not looking to, you know, put in a new ball field. We're not looking to necessarily, other than through grant opportunities, pursue additional safety measures. This is base operations. So, the message has to be clear that if we don't have that revenue or additional sources of revenue, we start to cut into the base, and it does impact our students.
Yeah, I would say too, I've read the Mount Healthy report, and Mount Healthy has been in a lot of financial trouble. And if you look through their report, they have the blueprint of what the expectation would be, and a lot of what they had to do, we've already done, is what I see. So, and they talk about things like, I think we have to look at pay-to-play, because that's one of the things they call out in that report that they brought up in the very beginning. So, you know, and then the base essentials, you know? It's expensive to run buses, it's expensive to run a lot of things. And we just, if we have to be honest, and look at the impact of all that, and what's the baseline bare minimum that we have to do as a Board of Education in the State of Ohio to educate our students? And we have to make it clear, like, hey, this is what we're asking the fund of those things, whether it's child mental health services or anything like that. That's stuff that is important right now in today's day and age. How's that?
If we hadn't did what we do, not come up with to try and, yeah, retire people, you know, people who wanted to leave, just think where we'd be right now.
Yep.
It'd be even more $50,000 to cut. So, kudos, Matt, for that, I appreciate that. And I know it wasn't received well, you know, it looked like we were buying people out. Here we are in a financial crisis, and we're buying people out, and really, that wasn't the case at all. So, save a lot of money on what we did, so...
It'll save the district millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Over the next three to five years.
And the sad thing is, when you cut another $2 million out, and that's a lot of money cut out. When you look at our budget, you're going to get into people. And that's the part that's, we don't want to get into that. So, that's, it's going to be very hard to have that much more money on this budget. Take it all.
And Matt, did you say that our enrollment looks flat for the next 10 years?
It does. I know about 10 years, but for the next couple of years, it doesn't seem to be any trajectory. It's been a lot of burning reason, right? We don't have any education of any new new elements or anything like that. We've been trending down just a little bit each year, 5, 10, 15. They add up, of course, three to five years, right? You know, we're under 2,000 students now. We always used to be above 2,000.
Yeah, I agree with what you said. I think it's true though, right, Matt, that for a public school district, they have expenses, right? It's usually 80% of it's personnel.
Right. Salary benefits typically 85%.
Yeah.
And what we ran into last time was, you know, we did this five years ago. You know, there was a lot of reductions made on things that weren't salary benefits. And we didn't bring in those back. So, there's a lot of what remains is fixed costs.
Right.
About 15%, but not a whole lot to trend back.
Right.
So, just like Mr. DePaul mentioned, unfortunately, if they make some bigger reductions, it's going to have to be that 85% that you have to do. Because most of what we're spending on is the service industry, so it's important to have.
I think you mentioned the word base. You know, as a superintendent in a state that values early literacy, the state does not fund all-day kindergarten. That is a luxury, and you want to talk about devastating. You know, there's so, there's so little time in half-day kindergarten to do the essentials. And what we do know about our youngest students is that there is so much value in the play. There's so much value in the exposure to art, to music, to PE. But when you talk about base, the state says those are luxuries. But in a state that continues to hammer home science of reading and early literacy, they still don't fund all-day kindergarten. You know, that is, you know, you want to talk about a red line for an academic group of people who believe you can't really... The foundations of education are laid in K1, 2, and 3. And then every teacher from their fields and nuance and, you know, it becomes as much about the skill as it does about the critical thinking and the communication and the collaboration, about the creation and the innovation. But, you know, base, that's not base. You know, double blocks of English in a middle school, not base. Like, and, but we know that they are important and they are valid. But, so, what I hear this evening is, one, as a board, community engagement needs to be essential. Two, that we need to continue to think about the idea of generating revenue, what that looks like. We need to look at base, what's the bare minimum? And, you know, what I worry about, and it's, I'm not campaigning, it's factual. People can take their money and go elsewhere, right? And if we're not offering a competitive, whole child, whole, you know, the whole gamut of electives and fine arts and, you know, the specials, you know, to use terms that may be generationally or transcendent, then it begins to look at the core and what that looks like. It changes the trajectory of the organization. We'll look at, you know, the things that we value. With the mental health, we have to find a way. We will look at other blueprints. There are more districts than Mount Healthy that have blueprints out there. I think they're required, Treasurer Pritchard, when they do those, to post those somewhere, when they do those performance audits.
Yes.
So, there's more than just theirs. And then we'll continue, you know, to look at our fixed costs. So, those are the marching orders or areas that I heard this evening that you want us to be working with.
And I just want to double back to early childhood education. There's an economic impact to residents. If you currently have a full-day kindergarten and you get cut back to a half-day, you're now looking at childcare, which is a tremendous expense and not readily available these days. I mean, there's been a lot of post-COVID impact of early childhood education opportunities in our community. And so, you know, you're looking at a big impact to your own pocketbook.
And looking at just financials, I believe Mr. Frye shared, we're one of the few preschool programs that still run, mostly in the lab. Because I think he shared that at the last meeting when we did the work session. He shared that we run profit. And, you know, for those of you that don't know, in Ohio, the way that public school preschools, they are a mix of students with disabilities and typical. So, you're not permitted, you can't just... We have a lot of demand for preschool that we can't fill, but that's the model. So, you can't just have one type over here and one type over there. You know, we can't fill the demand. So, yes, we will. This is a good starting point. We wanted to make sure we were meeting collectively your needs, and we were looking for some direct, you know, some direction on how to proceed. So, this is more than helpful for the team here. All right, adjournment.
Sub move.
Second.
Hi.
You said second.
I didn't.
All right. Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mr. Storey?
Yes.
Mr. Zerwin?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
7-0-1.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.